Would you like to start this session with a few verses of the Holy Quran? I would like to call Brother Rabas Ali, please, please start. Say, are those who know equal to those who do not know? Only they will remember who are people of understanding. This verse is the verse 9 from Surah Zumar. This verse highlights the honor Allah (ﷻ) places on knowledge and those who possess it. Teachers are the bridge and the carriers and transmitters of this light. They bridge the gap between ignorance and understanding. In Islam, sharing knowledge is an act of worship and a teacher's influence extends far beyond the classroom. As very good action done because of their guidance continues to be a source of reward even after they are gone. It's a reminder that teaching is not just a profession, but a trust and a legacy. So Allah (ﷻ) would argue nothing there. Hassan, thank you very much for the citation. I would like to welcome you all for this session. Amongst us will have our esteemed guest Sheikh Ali Rojani. Welcome. Allow me to read a few introductory notes for him, please. Sheikh was born in Dubai, completed his GCSE at Umeera College in 2011. He pursued Islamic studies at Imam Khomeini Specialized University in Qum, focusing on theology, earning his bachelor's degree in 2017 and his master's degree in Understanding Ahlul Bay' in 2023, with a thesis on Ahlul Bay' in the Quran. Currently, he is pursuing a PhD in Islamic theology. Sheikh Ali has completed major studies in the Hawsa system and began in their scholarship in 2020. He actively works with various community groups to fulfill his responsibilities. Without further ado, I would like to welcome Sheikh Ali to conduct this session with the loud Salawat ala Muhammad.
So to begin, first of all, I want to mention that the session style that I had in mind, I will present that and it should match that you have in mind so that we don't have any misunderstandings. The idea was to cover a topic, but rather than doing it as a lecture or a presentation that I run you through, I thought it would be best if we have it as a discussion, a guided discussion. So I've written a set of questions that I'd like for us to follow through and get your thoughts on them and build together and move towards the future. I find it's a more effective style of learning and maybe even in the future we could have this on the member as well. Obviously, it's challenging when you have all the different types of people from the community sitting together. And also some styles are specific to the member where a person can run a group of people through a certain topic uninterrupted. I feel this is the best way to have an educational and academic pursuit and journey. So, Insha Allah, that's the plan for today. If you didn't have that in mind and you signed up for today's session or you called for today's session, then please correct your perception and we'll have this session at peace. If anyone does have any suggestions to run it in another way, we'll discuss it and if it's the best suggestion, we'll go ahead with it. Whilst you're thinking of that and you have ways to relieve yourself of the responsibility of contributing, I want to speak just a few minutes about one of the verses of the Holy Quran that I think relates to teachers very well, teachers and the mindfulness. There's a verse of the Holy Quran, this is Surah Fussilat, verse number 33. I'll just quick see the number. Fussilat, verse number 33, you can even open the verse in front of you if you want to follow it. This verse talks about a person who has the best of speech. So Allah says, "Do you want to know the person who says the best things? Who's got the best things to say?" You probably think that this could pertain to somebody who's, "Thanks Allah", somebody who, for example, asks for forgiveness, somebody who says kind words to other people, somebody that, for example, has good interaction with the people around them. But Allah specifies a different rule. Allah says, Allah asks the question, "Who has better speech? Who speaks and puts across a message better than..." There's three qualities mentioned over here. And I feel that a good mother's a teacher has to have all three of these. You want to have the best of speech, the first one. This person is a person who's calling the community towards Allah. That's essentially our goal as mother's teachers. Everything that we teach to them is to pull them towards Tawqeeq, to pull them towards Allah. That's the goal of everything. If any of your lessons you can't connect to Tawqeeq, there's something wrong in that lesson. Everything we do in life has to find its way and connect itself back to Allah. So the best speech, the first thing, the first criteria is that it calls the people towards Allah. Calling the people towards the Ahlul Bay' even in essence is calling the people towards Allah when we want to show the people the beauty of the Ahlul Bay', that we should connect to the Ahlul Bay', that we should call out to the Ahlul Bay', that we should seek from the Ahlul Bay', this in essence is us bringing the people towards Allah, the values and the qualities that Allah has called us towards. So everything I like has to find its way back to Allah. There's also other things that you can call towards, and this is really dangerous as teachers. Sometimes we're calling them towards ourselves. This is a danger and a threat that I, as a person, am doing, tablil, face, and yourselves, as people are doing, tablil for your students. Sometimes we're trying to get them to think that I am a knowledgeable person, I am a good teacher, I'm somebody that's fun to interact with. The mission has to be to call them towards Allah. There's a nice anecdote that I remember and this happened, I was sitting in a mentalist ones and the speaker was, an esteemed speaker, well-known in Iran, is a witch that he and he said, he depicted this in his actions and he said that, "I'm going to act out this reality for you." He said, "Look, right now I'm sitting at the top of the member, you're all looking at me, listening to me." He says, "I'm supposed to call all of you towards what I'm saying and as soon as you start understanding what I'm saying, I'm supposed to continue besides you, connect with Allah." "I'm not supposed to call you towards myself and get stuck at me." And then he starts saying, "Mashallah, what a nice lecture, what a good person, what a virtuous person." Then, "Hey, must go towards Allah." I should leave the barrier myself in there. So I'm teaching my class, it's a nice thing, as the verse is teaching us right now, to clarify for myself that my mission is to guide the people towards Allah and nothing else. I'm not here to make them think I'm a good person, I'm not here to connect with them for the sake of connecting with them so that I feel happy about myself. It's an anecdote, the goals are to guide the people towards Allah. If you're the best speech, that's the best speech. But that's not enough. Sometimes if you have a non-Islamic worldview, you say, "Okay, and I'm here, there are Sukkot, what do we want more than this?" But Islamically, we say that calling towards Allah is not sufficient. You yourself, me myself, has to be somebody that practices what we preach. And this is so key for us as people who want to guide others. If we talk a lot, which some of us do, and we don't practice ourselves, then we've missed ourselves out on this mission, we've left ourselves out. And that doesn't even make sense, how am I going to call people towards Allah and show them the beauty of Allah, show them the beauty of connection with myself? I have no effort in this regard. The actions are not enough. This person says, "I am amongst the people that submit towards Allah." Actions and beliefs have to always be together. You cannot separate actions from beliefs. Beliefs without actions are fruitless. And actions without belief are basisless. Those words weren't just random, I'll say it again. Beliefs without actions are fruitless. We have a belief, we believe in something so strongly, we don't do anything about it. It's fruitless, this belief doesn't have any value and in fact it's not a true belief. It's like somebody saying, okay, I mentioned this example, if you've heard it. It's like somebody saying, the building in the second floor has caught fire. It's caught fire, the fire is spreading, it's going to take my life. If you really believe it's caught fire, you have to run away, right? Use the stairs, run away, get out. And if you have actions that are not based on beliefs, it's basisless. Means that you'll do one action one day, you'll do another action the next day, there's no continuity. There's no principles and values behind these actions. It'll be something that's just to impress people one day, to make myself happy one day, to make me tick off my list that I achieved my goals one day. It has no reality, so we need actions and beliefs. Interesting, this verse also has the element of me saying it out loud. And they say that I am amongst those who are the Muslims, the people who submit towards Allah. Stating this is also important, not only just having it within us. So if we want to have the best of speech, mother's a teacher, an amazing opportunity, call towards Allah. Insha Allah, we get a chance to practice what we're calling towards and we have the right beliefs, these three are the component for success. We'll have the best of words and we'll have the best of lives, Insha Allah. So it's an amazing opportunity that you have and we have as teachers, specifically mother's a teachers, to put across these realities and the rewards of being a teacher and being somebody who guides is something that are Hadith. We don't even enumerate, we don't have, for example, five, seven, ten, one thousand. There's one Hadith that says a person and it's a very beautiful Hadith in line with that Ayah. Whoever learns for Allah, you learn for Allah, you practice for Allah, and teaches for Allah. Very simply, right? You learn first, we have the right guidance, correct you. You practice and then you teach. Knowledge meaning beliefs, actions and then practice. Allah says that in the skies and the hidden realm, they'll be known as somebody who's very grand and great with a lofty status. Achievable being a mother's a teacher. Whoever learns for Allah, practices for Allah, teaches for Allah, lofty status. It's not easy, it's not going to be easy to achieve a lofty status. So you've taken the right steps and you are in the right place, you've signed up for the right job to be able to be seen in Allah's eyes as somebody who's very loved. So this is the opportunity that we have and these were the few points that I wanted to say about this opportunity. So that's the start and the end of my matchlist, our normal matchlist. The discussion that I thought was something that we should have is what Sayyid Sikkander, our beloved Molana, mentioned that we should discuss is a topic, the title we have is Teaching Jafar'i Foundations with Unity and Wisdom. So I'm going to test you first. What do we understand from this topic and what do we want to speak about in this topic? What are our major concerns, if any, about this topic? And you should do this in class, I always like starting a class with expectations. It's nice to know because you come and teach something and the guy doesn't even care about it, the girl doesn't even care about the topic. Let's see what your thoughts are on this topic and then if what I've prepared matches that, if it doesn't, then maybe it's a way to end the session earlier. So what do we think about this topic? What does it tell us and what questions do I have, what concerns do I have, what thoughts do I have surrounding this topic? Teaching Jafar'i Foundations with Unity and Wisdom. Do you have a concern? Okay. Why you still come up? Okay. Sure. Good, so the importance of wisdom in the classroom is something that you are in touch with. Good, good, thank you. What else? I gave you enough time to think about the rest of what. As teachers, you know that teachers have to be very patient, so I'll try my best to be very patient. Don't test it. Please. Please, I'll take notes. Dissection is an important thing in the classroom and the lab as well. Okay, what is Jafar'i? Can I add an A? What is A Jafar'i? Okay. Yeah?
Unity.
Okay.
And then wisdom, so you break those three down and then, like you said, dissect each one.
Okay, unity, wisdom. Okay, I'm trying to get your perceptions on this, so what are your thoughts on this? Okay, so what do we have as thoughts on these three or more or less? What do we expect, what do you, you've come over here, you have some expectation when you came here. You saw the topic where you just came because it's a mother's a session. You had some expectation that what should I expect to learn today? And if you didn't, it's fine, I've said the topic about three minutes ago. Three minutes is a bit amount of time for you to think about what should we expect from such a session. This is really important by the way, I feel the expectations of the people you're speaking to is so key to align with your expectations in your presentation to make sure that we come up with something useful, not that we, after an hour, you know, I feel happy, Alhamdulillah, you know, attentive session and you say, "Alhamdulillah, patihi" and then we all go home and it's the end, for example, that's not the way to do it, yes? I can hear you. When you saw the topic? You can't, no, I can't hear, so the mic is coming.
So when I saw the topic, I found it very deep, there was a lot of depth.
Okay.
So the reason why I came was, I was interested to learn what is going to unfold here.
Okay, okay, so generally, ready to learn? Okay, good. Anyone have something more specific in mind? Although that's a nice energy to come into session with, yes, Hassan?
I know the intention to define what is Jafar'i Foundation.
Okay.
How can we teach with unity in class?
Okay.
Talking about the unity of teachers, the unity of the class itself. Basically trying to break down the topic.
Okay, nice, that's good, so what is Jafar'i Foundations? Let's add that word.
So I think Jafar'i Foundation was really a very important, what comes to mind when I think is like, maybe there were different schools of thought.
Okay.
And in today's time.
Okay.
And you're going to be right.
Okay.
So instead of like fighting and, you know, if you have different thought, maybe you learn how to pull together in a certain direction or unite, like, you know, not fight over anything.
Yeah.
Something along those lines.
Very good, that is one of the key.
Different opinions, different perspectives or different schools of thought.
Yeah. Okay, very good, so this is one of the key areas of discussion. By the way, this topic was suggested, not just the name, the name was suggested first and I didn't get too much of a say in the topic name that was sent to me. But then Molana, a few days ago, Sayyid Sikkander had a discussion with him and he explained what he had in mind, the person who had actually presented this topic and it's quite in line with what you said as well. Okay, what else? Whilst you're thinking, I'm going to introduce a little bit more classroom-like, let's throw some lights. These are the three areas of discussion that we have this now. Anyone have any suggestions to speak? Sorry, sorry.
If you would understand your own Jafar'i school of thought and through wisdom understand the different schools of thought, then only you would be able to present it, like, understand, if you would understand with wisdom, then you'd be able to compare and bring it in a more amicable way rather than, I don't know how to put it.
Confrontational, for example. Okay, good, what else?
Jafar'i Foundations, yeah, I'm a Jafar'i.
Okay.
I've assumed I'm a Jafar'i, I can only to look where I understand you, so I think that would be utmost for us to understand who we are, where we are and what we are basically.
Okay, so can I write what are our principles? What is our identity?
Yes.
Okay, that's nice. Okay, yeah. The men are hopefully silent. Although we're outnumbered, so it's okay. Ratio-wise, we're doing okay, I'm absolutely confident. Anyone else? What expectations we have, we've been speaking about this topic for eight, nine minutes now, you should have expectations in your mind. Yeah, so that's a question on identity. What is our identity, yeah, that's good, yeah?
I think that this topic, I mean, I'm not sure if we could, I mean, that you know, have sometimes we're trying to box owner or identity and this is what we do, this is culture and religion. And sometimes we may go on the extreme side of it and, you know, trying to break this unity or trying to break principles of certain things. So if I think it's better for us to understand what are our foundations, basically trying to differentiate gold from the dirt.
Okay, good, good, good. Okay, let me give you a bit more since we've taken some good steps. Let me give you some food for thought and we'll go more to you. The main questions we wanted to discuss, as in Sayyid suggested and I'm busy to comment, is these. I'm going to present these questions, tell me how relevant they are, if they're not relevant, we'll discuss other questions, there's no issue. There's some nice discussions over here, in fact, this is a very key discussion. What is our identity? How have we prioritized our identities? Okay, the topic that Sayyid suggested, which is an important discussion, is this. That in a society where there's so many different schools of thought, right? It's very naive for us to think that, you know, we are Shias, we only interact with Shias, we only have Shias, aren't we? There's people from different ideologies around us, especially your mother's a students. Something as basic as school, right? Something as basic as the sports they play, although you guys have a sports ground over here, but I'm sure people do play some sort of sport outside, swimming is, there's no swimming over here, you can also swim in the ocean specifically. Like some people do, they don't get a chance over here. And I heard this morning with the people who go, "There's big groups, you bump into different people, that's normal, that's what the world is." And even if you don't, your phone is the gateway to the world today. So we have different ideologies. When we have different ideologies, you can see different paths that can be taken. And the sister over here mentioned something that is very much in line with that. When you have different schools of thought, one type of ideology says that, "Look, let's get rid of our differences." "Let's be Muslims, why do we have to be Shias? Why do we have to call ourselves Jafar'i and Alawi and Shiite? Let's be Muslims, let's make our main identity Muslim." That's one ideology. How do we navigate these differences? How do we navigate the new world? Let's stick to our Muslim identity and we don't need a particular denomination called Shia. There's a question that does exist, if you don't have it, then you should be aware this question does exist. And it's likely your mother's a students have this question, this is one view. Another view is the other extreme, so this is one extreme that says that we should get rid of the denominations and stand by your Islamic identity. The other polar opposite of this view says that, "No, in fact, our only identity and our only criteria for right and wrong and our only criteria for communication and interaction is being Jafar'i." Means that if somebody is not Jafar'i, we don't even communicate to them, we don't interact to them, we don't care about them. They even say things like this, this is none of our concern. This definitely sounds wrong, right? This is like the Jewish ideology, that the Jews are the superior beings, anyone else is lower than the Jews at the level of animals. Right? They even have a specific term for it, if anyone remembers the term. Does anyone know the term? Say, Amal, right? I was going to say that name, but I thought that was on here. They say anyone who's a non-Jew is inferior to us. So that's the ideology of the Sunta Quran. Now, which of these two extremes are correct? How should we navigate our lives? And what are the practical implications of this? Okay, in theory, let's say, we're able to draw somewhere along this spectrum, we're able to place where we should be, how we should be, but let's make that practical now. Let's not just talk, "Oh yeah, we should be people that are of the middle path, not this extreme, not that extreme." It's so easy to say that, but what is the middle path? What does it really mean? So this is the discussion that we were supposed to have. Is this something that's interesting, relevant and something that you feel that you would benefit from or should we try another discussion? Does it sound relevant? I don't mind going for another discussion, if I've prepared on it before, I'll be able to present as well. If there's another discussion you guys find within the general framework of what you've said that's more relevant, mention that and we'll discuss that. It's good, it's a good discussion. Can we get like a sort of a nod from pretty much everyone, so there is some sort of buy-in from the customers on the product? I'm ready to go for, this discussion is one that I can present, what's our key identity? The struggle between culture and religion is another discussion that I feel is pertinent and I can have, we can have a discussion on that as well. So if somebody says something, I get a feel of how you feel. Should we have a voting process? The second one is more relevant? Culture, culture, religion is more relevant? Yes? More relevant or the first one? So let's have a vote then, if you don't mind. We believe in democracy also. The first one is the one that I presented, that balancing between being on the two extremes, one extreme of being pluralistic, we call, that we get rid of denominations and move towards human values and try and say that, "Look, we're all together on this." And the other extreme where we become exclusives and we say that only my way, I'm not going to interact, I treat anyone that does not my way as somebody who's inferior. So that's the first discussion. The second one is religion versus culture, the balance between religion and culture. So can we have our votes, please, we vote once, I'm the electoral commissioner and I will count the votes in China. So if we can have a shortcut for the first topic? One, two, three, four, five. Five votes, okay? Second topic? One, second topic is culture and religion. One, two, three, okay, let's stick there. So we go for the second topic. I'll just put across the point of the first topic quickly, rather than going through it in questions. I'll tell you the summary of the discussion. We don't believe in either of the two extremes. We don't believe in being people that accept all ideologies and let, you know, we have an Islamic identity that's above our Shia identity. Look, we don't have Islamic and Shia identity, our faith is a part of our identity. In our faith, one of the key values within our faith is our belief that the Imams were appointed In our faith, one of the key values within our faith is our belief that the imams were appointed by Allah for the guidance of humanity. That forms a Shia identity. Now, you have to call it Islam Shia. It's the same thing for us. If you want to keep moving up and create new identities, then we should have like, you know, Ahli Kitab identity as well. And then we should have like, you know, monotheist ideology, uh, identity as well. Then we should have like, same people's ideology, uh, identity as well. We can keep creating identities and it's fine, but our key identity is people that believe in their religion as complete format. Aliyamak Malikul Akum Binakum means that today, the religion was made complete, came down after the announcement of Ulai, Ulai is a key component of religion. And so our identity should be Jafri, should be Shia. That's our own identity. How we present this identity, how we show the world who we are, often we'll take unity as a very good strategy. We should be people that promote unity. This doesn't give us the liberty to now fall over the other extreme and say that, okay, now, anyone who's not a Shia is insignificant, a person who's an Amal, like for example, we don't treat them as anything, we don't value them, we don't care about them, we don't, in fact, you know that the whole Bilan Muslim mission was an order by, I shall say, Hufsin al-Hakim, the Marja of the time, that he said that you're sitting in Africa and you're not working on the African. Like, what are your thoughts? Like, you just think you're supposed to save yourself and just save yourself? You have a responsibility towards the people around us. So over here, we have to be people that are, that use wisdom and use unity as key tools to navigate our decisions. We should never say something that defeats unity, specifically Islamic unity. And by the way, unity, we can have different layers, Islamic unity, Ahli Kitab unity, monotheist unity is no problem, because the Holy Quran instructs us. Invite the Christians to things that we have as commonalities. We believe in one God, we obey God, we believe in the Hereafter, all of these are commonalities. To create areas where we have commonalities with people is beautiful, it's excellent. It's now bringing us together with more people. Kenya has a population of forty, fifty million people? Fifty, fifty million people. You understand this, one thousand two hundred people, one thousand three hundred people, not for Shias, twenty thousand people. What's all of a save you? Let's say you're able to unite all the Muslims. I would assume Kenya has ten, fifteen million Muslims? Thirty percent, twenty percent? Ten, fifteen million people. That's a force now. Now you're talking, right? And if you're able to work with the Christians against the non-believers, the atheists, now you've got probably eighty, ninety percent of the country in this area. So unity is a strategy, it's a very smart strategy, the annual bait of progress. So we don't, the result of the whole discussion, I'm summarizing an hour's discussion in five minutes. The result of this discussion is that we don't attack people for their faith openly, because what this will do is it will just create enemies for us. But that should not allow us to start doubting our principles. I think you guys are enjoying the lectures, I have more than my class staff. That's not acceptable. I think this is one generation above your students maybe. We have to act with wisdom face, that we don't compromise our own values and say that, look, we want to be together with everyone. That means now I'm not a Jafri, I'm not a Shia, I'm not a Muslim tomorrow, I'm not, where are you gonna go into? These are key elements of our lives. We believe in these, we firmly believe in them, we make our decisions based on these identities. If Muslims think something is halal and we think it's haram, I mean Muslims that are other than Shias, we'll base our decisions on our identity and vice versa. So that's the defining factor in our lives. But the way we hold ourselves in society, we don't want to create enemies for no reason. We want to be united on the basis that we can be with as many people as possible. Even with human beings, tomorrow with human beings from any country in the world, if they share values with us, we'd like to discuss with them based on those values. That's the beginning point. That's what will hold us together and allow us to build society. So summarizing our topic, you can be happy that we finished our discussion for today. What is, sorry, that's not it. The discussion that we had was teaching Jafri foundations. As teachers, you have to teach Jafri foundations. Don't be shy of that. You have to put across Islam in its most complete, Aliyamak Malikul Akum Binakum. Full Islam across in its most complete version. You don't want to put across Islam that's incomplete. You teach full Islam with unity. We're not trying to create enemies for no reason. We want to uphold unity. Unity is a principle and Islam has a strategy to keep as many people together as possible. But we have to have wisdom, meaning that we don't compromise our values as well. Each step that we make, each statement that we make, each lesson that we teach, each point that we're putting across, we have to weigh it up in this paradigm. Am I compromising the unity of the Muslims? Then I shouldn't say it. Am I compromising my values and my principles? I shouldn't say it even. We have to have both of these together. I'm not compromising my values. I'm also not damaging and injuring Muslim unity. Both are given together, yes? Maybe we can have a discussion on this now that we know the answer. It would've been so much fun if you go to the answer. I don't like saying the answer. It's very difficult. Good, good question. Maybe we'll just have this discussion. Where does Tabarra fall in all of this? Tabarra, the key of Tabarra is this, that we express our hatred for the enemies of the annual bait and this is something that's a principle. It's a part of our nature. But does this mean we have to like hold up Sunnis or non-Shias and tell them, hey, listen? In our faith, we have to speak against people that you love. Now, how do you enjoy that? What's the point in doing that? Why do we have to post these things on Instagram loud and clear for the world to see that we're doing land to people? The Holy Quran says, let me read the verse to you. This is Surah An-verse number one of it. Allah says that those people that are doing shirk, right, they worship idols, they're calling Isa Ral, right, for the Isa. All of these, Allah says, don't go and start insulting these people. Don't speak bad in their face. Why? Out of their envy and spite that you've caused in their hearts, they'll now start insulting Allah back. So we need to go to their faces and tell them in their face. It's a principle in the Quran. But we have to be smart, we have to be wise. Everything that we say has to have its own place. Some people think that if I'm not pronouncing my Tabarra loudly, means I have some color, you know, it's like some weakness in my Jafri identity. The Jafri identity should be very strong, in its own place, be strong here. But when you're faced with people that, together we can be stronger, because you have to also understand the key of unity. Many people don't understand the value of unity. If you've not thought socially, which cultures we're not taught to think socially, we as cultures, we think super individually. The most, you kill yourself like a Kudja. I'm a Kudja already, you know, and I'm speaking to myself first and live these values. The most you can think of is of future months. And if you're really, really strong, you can think of the Kudjas around the world. That's about one hundred and twenty thousand people in a population of eight billion people. So we can totally think like this. So we don't value unity. You don't care if something else happens to somebody. But if we think wider than that, if we think globally, we'll understand that the strategy of those that are trying to get rid of Islam is a cliche, grand strategy that's called divide and conquer. It's exactly what they wanted to do. They wanted the Shias to fight the Sunnis in Iraq so that they can sit back and watch. It's fun for them, right? They want Iraq to be interminable. They don't want to get involved in fighting because they lose lives, they lose money, it's just difficult, germi chowah. They don't want to get involved in that. So what do they do? They go and tell the Shia, you know what, the Sunnis say this about you. They go and tell the Shias, the Shias say this about you. Pop, you sit back and you watch. It's like you light a flame and you watch it, you enjoy it. And it goes out of control. Why? Because we don't understand the value of our unity. We don't understand that whenever we stood together as Muslims and whenever we, we stood together as Abrahamic faiths with the right people of these faiths, as monotheists, we've progressed. We fought issues that we faced. So Tabarra is not needed to be said loudly, we have to protect the unity. And by the way, there's something that our Hadith tells us very strongly. Our Hadith, the imams would constantly instruct the believers that go pray in these people's mosques. How many Kudjas go and pray in a Sunni mosque? In this trip, I've already prayed in a Sunni mosque. On my way here, I was in Zanzibar. It became namastam, I want to pray in a Sunni mosque, interestingly, to lighten the mood a little bit. After namastam, the Molana, uh, I would even pray in Jamat. There's a way to pray in Jamat, by the way, if you don't know how to do it, learn it. I would pray in Jamat. We reached late, I couldn't pray in Jamat. So I prayed in the back with my brother and afterwards I met the Molana. The Molana, he came and he met, and he said, he speaks, he was speaking Arabic. And so he said, you know, where are you from? And my brother said, you know, I come from Dubai. I told my brother, well, Tanzania, you're telling him Dubai. Anyway, he told him Dubai for whatever reason. And this Molana is like, what are your names? So he said, my brother is Abbas and I'm Ali. So he said, ah, these are names that the Shias really like. So I, I wanted to see what his thoughts are. So I said, yeah, but the Sunnis, we like these names too as well. Although I didn't say we in a way, but I would include it. So I, I probably said something like, because my attempt was not to lie. So I told him something like, as Muslims, we all love these names. And then I said, Radhi Allahumma. By the way, we believe in Radhi Allahumma. May Allah be pleased with them. Allah is pleased with them. Means Allah is pleased with them. It's the same words. We just like using Alayhi Salam because it's how the imams taught us. But there's nothing wrong with Radhi Allahumma. So I told him, that Radhi Allahumma, may Allah be pleased with both of them. And then he started saying the story of the mosque. So now he thinks that I'm not a Shia. And he said that, he said that in this mosque, we've been, we've had it for five hundred years and every single Muslim played prison in this mosque from all the different sects, except Shias. So I turned to him and I told him, so Alhamdulillah, today you found your first Shia that prayed. And like, I didn't know what to say, I was like, oh no. But this is unity, right? We go and pray in their mosques, so the imams told us to. We go and pray in their mosques, we speak with them, we talk with them, we have common goals with them. There's no need to go, I go to this guy, you know, you're gonna pray in Jamat because of your love for this and that person. What's the point? I want to guide that person. I have to have the love for my brothers and humanity in my mind. I have the answers. Brilliant, brilliant, very good, very good, very good, very good. Super. I like this. It's like a real question that you felt the difficulty of. These are the best questions. My suggestion is that in your classes, uh, do we have any heads of mothers out there? If the mothers are fully Shia, fully food, like they're sure that every single person is Shia in your mother's? Makes them arrogant. That's okay, but they, their identity is Shia. If you have a fully Shia class, teach them. Teach it very clearly. Yeah? That's it, so I'm coming to that. Teach them the realities. Put across history to them as it is. And we shouldn't fall short on this responsibility. History is to be taught, the realities are to be taught. We are not allowed to fall short on our values of the imams. We stand strong. But then also teach them wisdom, teach them unity in a separate discussion. Teach them, look, these are all realities. But the same way, for example, let's say, right, very simple, unity is so, in fact, in the Quran, some people like verses of the Quran. Let me bring this verse of the Quran. It goes, somebody who doesn't subscribe to unity, somebody who doesn't use their intellect. The Holy Quran says, this is Surah Hashul verse number fourteen. It's talking about the Jews. It says, these people will not fight you in your face together, except behind walls, they're hiding, they're really scared. Between them, they have so many differences. You think that these people are united, but their hearts are separated. These people, their hearts are separated and they don't really have unity. This is because these are people who don't use their intellect. Very basic example for unity, right? Let's say you are staying in house number one hundred and thirty-five. Next door neighbor is one hundred and thirty-six, the next one is one hundred and thirty-seven, right, on a particular street. And you don't get along. You don't get along. As neighbors, he parks in your driveway and he thinks that you're not taking care of his property. And sometimes, for example, when you're cleaning a house, something goes over to his house and all sorts of degenerates that you have with your neighbors, right? You have this and it's ongoing. And let's say they're a difficult person to live with and it's ongoing. Now, when an attacker comes to attack this whole street, to break down all the houses on the street, will you stand back and say that, you know, you can attack one hundred and thirty-six, but just don't touch one hundred and thirty-five? The attacker wants to take all of them together. You know, the attacker will say, be smart, say, yes, yes, let's sign a peace treaty. Me, you, we're friends. I take down one thirty-six and we're good. He'll take down one thirty-six, you leave and support him. And what happens? Tomorrow he turns on you. You gave him a free ride into your street, now he's penetrated to the street in a way that he has access inside the houses. He'll jump over the wall, they're coming to your house. This is what's happening today. We're being attacked. We need to teach our students the mentality of wis, of unity. The wisdom behind unity, right? We need to teach them. And there's an Islamic principle, I showed you Quran, I showed you Hadith, I showed you intellect, this is what we need to put across. So don't compromise on our teachings and our realities, but also put across the importance of wisdom. Yes, the, the, so good? If you have more questions, I like this. This is good, that important. I can't hear. My hearing is a waste. Hate, what do we mean by hate? Do you mean like some sort of like? This is, yes.
We can hear this happen in history.
Yes, naturally one of us.
That, that necessarily you need that, I need to teach them to hate them.
Hate, I don't like this word hate. Give me another word.
So like when you're saying Tabarra, it's like, uh, instilling this to young people?
No, Tabarra in Arabic, this is important. Tabarra in Arabic literally means, again, it's in the Holy Quran. Shall I show you the verses? Yes? Tabarra is a concept all over the Holy Quran. This is about the hellfire. Surah Baqarah verse number one hundred and sixty-seven. This is a communication between two groups of people on the day of Tiyamah. One group followed a group that was misguided. So let's say, and this is a very important verse, sometimes other people misguide us, we accept the misguided and on the day of Tiyamah, we turn to Allah and say, Allah says, look, you listened to him. He was calling you, you listened to him, you're both to blame. The people who followed say, if only we could return back to this earth. So that we could distance ourselves from these people, the same way on the day of Tiyamah, when we're saying they're the ones that misguided us. They're distancing themselves from us and saying that, ah, we had nothing to do with you. We told you to follow, you followed us with your own steps. Tabarra actually means to distance, disassociate. If we're teaching Tabarra as hate, this isn't the right word. I don't like the word hate. I don't comprehend properly what hate means. Hate, often in our day to day, it's a broad term. Hate in our language is out of like a position of weakness. Like somebody's done something, for example, you hate somebody that you're jealous of. Hatred can be in that form as well, right? Somebody has a nice car, they earned it with halal money, I hate them. That's wrong, that's wrong. But to understand what, I can be open in my speech here, sorry. To understand, this, this is supposed to be wisdom, right? You ask who you're proud of, this, ask who the people are. To understand what the Khalifas did. They oppressed, there's no hiding that. They oppressed her, it's in their own books, loud and clear. Am I gonna hide that now? Or say that, okay, look, guys, understand this, but don't mislead people. You know, this should be like a small mystery. They did this, they oppressed the Bifatah, they caused for her martyrdom, they martyred her, straight up, they martyred her. Hadith are very clear on this. And I stand back and say, look, this is all true, the world ends with everybody, without everybody. No, sorry, we don't love everybody. But you don't have like spite in my heart, like I, like that in my heart, no. I know that these people are misguided, I distance myself from them, I disassociate. I ask Allah that Allah distance your rahmah from these people. These are people that do not deserve your rahmah because of the choices they made in this world. Not because I, I don't like their name, you know, whenever, whenever I hear the name, one of them is like, I don't like the name. This is like hatred. This is a bit not based on logic, it's childish. This is wrong. To distance ourselves, to say that, no, this is something wrong that happened. When I'm having discussions promoting unity, does this mean I go to them and tell them, you know, these personalities that you revere, your Khalifas, we also revere them? Shias think so highly of Allah. No, I don't, why do I need to say that? I don't need to, the whole point of unity is that in unity, we're not focusing on points of difference, we're focusing on points of that are in common, commonalities. That's the whole point of unity. If we have the exact same views and everything, that's not community, that is being one. Unity means where there is a difference. For example, if I'm your best friend, verse Mashallah, our unity both are, so unity of my best friend and my best friend. If when I have a person that I don't see eye to eye with, I'm able to come together for the greater If when I have a person that I don't see eye to eye with, I'm able to come together for the greater good, that's called unity. So that's answer. So haters are the right word, but distance, yes. Are they people that deserve distance from Allah's mercy? Yes. Are they in punishment just now? Yes. Are they in the worst punishment? Yes. Have they oppressed the Islamic nation? Yes. It's all reality. I'm not hiding this from my students. But I should teach them to use their intellect and promote unity as well. Yes?
Do you still think Tabarra and distance is a problem? Can it reach the point where?
Correct. Okay. Distancing ourselves from them doesn't mean the Sunnis, doesn't mean the Muslims, means the leaders. We distance. I say, in my own heart, this is my firm belief, my identity, that I do not want to be like them. I do not want to have a life like them. I distance myself from all the oppression that they did. I do not stand with the values that they stood for. But now there's a Sunni in front of you. A person that's a Muslim, that I have so much in common with, that has probably heard the wrong things, that has been misguided. Tonight's venture is going to discuss this in a certain extent as well. I'm not marketing. At least so that you get more reading. You can pull this person closer. Now should I go and start stating my messages I have against the religion? Unity means that, look, we have 10 things, 10 components. Six of them are common, four of them are uncommon. And these four, another compromise that are part of my faith, a part of my religion, even if the Sunni asks me, I'll tell him, look, this is a part of my religion. But I'm not going to stick it in his face and tell him, look, if you want to be my friend, know that I don't accept number one, I don't accept number two, I hate number two. I wish this is the bottom of Jannah where he should be. What's the point in that? What's the purpose? What are, what are we trying to achieve? My question is that, where's the wisdom behind it? Are we just speaking based on hatred, you know? I think the previous generation had this hatred, you know, they go and write the names of the toilet, for example. Why? And what, what do you get out of that? I'm telling you real stories, you know, they really did these things. Why? Like, what's the purpose? At home, if you want to do it, you go to a little business here, feel free, I mean, I have nothing to stop you, but I don't think it's a very smart thing. Unity is with them. We tell them, look, yes, we have differences. Look, we have that enemy that's going to destroy our whole street. Let's stand together against them like this. In the matter of Palestine today, the Muslims have failed Palestine because of unity. We're caught up in our own differences in a way that we can't unite with people that we have so much in common with. Does this mean for me to unite with the people of Palestine? I'll give you the best example. I'll have to give you another example. Then I have to go to a people class and look, I want to come and help you. But before I help you, you need to sign a contract. I hate the first Khalifa. I hate the second Khalifa. What's the point? What, what are we trying to get to? This is my point. So I pronounce in my own identity, distance from these people. It's true. I am, in our hearts, we don't have any affection, we don't have any soft spot for the Khalfis or not to hate. Nothing, nothing at all. And that's just a strong part of our identity. But do I need to go and shout this out and present it? That's where unity shows itself. Yes? Correct. Correct. Okay, that's, so there's two different, there's, then he stopped you, then you mentioned the second word. This is a thing, man. One, one way of saying it is that, look, they're burning in hellfire. Why do I have to say it? No, 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 no. Yeah, we have to say it. The Ashura is teaching us to say it. The Quran is teaching us to say it. You want the verse? Some people say the Quran doesn't have la.
What is happening right now?
Let me just say, say, very, very good. Inna lalim yaktuuna ma anzalna min al bainat wal budak. The people who, who hide the guidance of Allah. After it's been made clear, ulaaika yal'anhumullah. Allah sends lahnu Allah. Wa yal'anhumul la'ynun. Allah sends lahnu, and we feel shy to send lahnu. So that Quran is in its own place. Very good. Mashallah, some people actually, I think it's in the right Quran. Surah Baqarah, 159. So we do have la. We do distance ourselves from them and we should make it a part of our faith. Tabarra is a part of our faith. If they're burning in Jannah or not, that doesn't concern, although they are, but that doesn't concern me right now. I have to distance myself from them. I have to be away from them. I do not want the slightest of their character in my life. And this is key. We have love for the Auliha and we have hatred in this sense. Now I'll use the word hatred. Let me replace the word hatred. We have distance from those. That's why as a teacher, be careful. Maybe we take this word hatred now. It sounds like we're being like reactionary, you know, it's like, ah, I hate you. It's not like that. We distance ourselves from them. We don't have any compromises. But like you said, where do we announce this distance? You have to be smart with that. We don't, as humans, why is it that we know, for example, somebody on the street meets you and tells you, what's your bank statement? Do you think you'd like to tell them how much you have in your bank? You don't, I don't, I don't want to say that. Like, why is it that everything I know, I have to say? In fact, wisdom means that. The definition of wisdom in speech is that I don't say everything I know. There's a Hadith on this, it's very clear. La ta'ul kullama ta'ala. Don't say everything that you know. Very straight up. Very straight up. You don't have to say it. So that's the first point. So I hope that makes sense. So not that we don't express, but who we express it to, we can. So for example, in our mosques, do we have to send la loudly? I think in our mosques, there may be some people that are Sunni. I don't know about the dynamic of it here, because the community is large in this, but some mosques, we know there are people that Sunnis that, that come, they attend, they want to learn. They're looking to change their ways. Oh, if we do la over there, you keep them up, tomorrow you won't be there. Did you win the game or did you lose the game? I think you lost the game. And the second one?
Hold our hands in prayer or not, while getting with our, this is the vice of time, 20 years of the jum'ah.
Very good, but again, that needs to be said in the right way. If that means, if, this is a statement that's common knowledge, that we're fighting or folding our hands, we're keeping it straight when they want to chop our hearts, we don't have hands to discuss. But that doesn't mean I'm going to start praying if my hands close. I'm stronger than my values. I'm going to stand strong. And even if a Sunni asks me tomorrow, what's the right way of praying? I say, oh, like this. We're the same as you. You come to our mosque, come and see, and you announce the most high but high but low, or I will say, oh, it doesn't work like that. We stand, we're strong. In fact, we want to guide him. So this statement can be, again, some of these statements are, what we're trying to say is that we have more important battles to fight. Than us getting stuck in these nitty grittys when it comes to working with other Muslims. Not to bring down the importance of praying with our hands crossed. If you pray with your hands crossed, you're the Mas'ib Baqarah. But then, the doctrine of religion is now, also has instances where you can practice takiya. Because again, it's in the Quran, you know, takiya is in the Quran. Yes? So I don't have to bring this. Somebody wants it, we're here, the question will find the verse, so we can all write it down. If you want to search it, it is. Illa malukriha wa qalbu mutmaninun bidiman. They have Arabic survey, survey. Yes?
Okay, so just one thing, are we supposed to teach them overall, first? The way I believe is like, we're supposed to love all of creation.
Okay.
Regardless of who they are and how they are, because at the end of the day, if somebody behaves in a certain way that is not acceptable, it's because of lack of two things, lack of love and lack of knowledge.
Okay.
So are we supposed to instill that in them as well?
Everybody that goes astray is because of lack of love and lack of knowledge. Which one did Cheikh Angh miss? Which one did Yazeed miss? Which one did Shem miss? Which one did, all the tyrants? Which one did, the tyrants, what did Netanyahu miss? What did Trump miss? What did the oppressors in our communities, in our community, there are people that are oppressed? That's not a complete statement, this is not a thing. Because if we say that essentially, we're saying that the human will is not important. Prophet Nuh, the best of lovers, the best of knowledgeable people, why did his son go astray? Did he give him less love? Did he give him less knowledge? The human being, even if they give him a top level of knowledge and love, they have freedom. So we have to behave in freedom. But, like you said, there's a, there's a truth to it, that we have to obviously create an environment where love and knowledge is provided. That's our responsibility, parents, as teachers. But even after providing that, some people can choose to go astray. And that's free work. The second point that you have ties to the first point, ties it with this point. So do we love everybody? Yes and no. What, what do I say, yes and no? Do we love everybody? We love every human being for their potential to reach Allah. And that's why our Imam, and I spoke about this a few nights ago as well, they want to guide every single person, even Yazeed. Because he's a human being in the end, he has the potential. So that much care and concern we have for everybody. But a person who chooses after knowledge, after love, as you say, chooses to stay on the wrong path, sorry, I'm not going to start sending flowers and cards to this person. He's a person I'm going to push aside and if needed, I'll kill that person. If Islam tells me to kill that man. What's more, what more means that? See, as good as Mashallah, non-confrontation. Why you have to go in a Quran, Malikul Jeez? If I say, Tamlet, Tamlet, how many verses about killing? I give you 10 verses. So many. I'm not scared. If Islam tells me to, we. We create, we set and practice our values based on what Allah tells us to. If Allah tells us this person needs to be given punishment for punishment. In fact, this is a nice verse, let me say this one. This is very interesting because it's so good to, to all together. So this is Surah Nuh, verse number two. It's, it's talking about the punishment of adultery. Azaniyat wa zani fajridu kullawahadi minhumaa maitat jallah. A person who fornicates, they have to be lashed, 100 lashes, maitat jallah. This Sunni is in a particular Muhsana, it's got different rulings, whether they were married or not. But this part is very nice. Wa la ta'qudkum behima. Write this down, Surah Nour, verse number two. Nour, nour, nour. Nour, nour. And nour, light. N, and you are. Nour, verse number two. Wa la ta'qudkum behima raqfatu fi dinilah. Allah says, don't think that you should be merciful towards these people. In the religion of Allah, if you feel merciful, we should forgive them. No, that Allah is the most merciful. Allah has decided this punishment to correct society. That's a greater level of mercy. You only be merciful to this person, not lash them. Tomorrow, the society is going to get involved in problems. You want to sit back and say, oh, you know, we should be kind to everyone? No. Islam says, be rough with this person by the order of Allah. So that society is fixed tomorrow, so we can have a greater level of kindness. So a person who picks the wrong path after knowledge, based on Allah's instructions, based on related instruction, that's not a place to go. It says, wa la ta'qudkum behima raqfatu. Don't let your, um, incomplete understanding of mercy take over the rule of Allah. It's not this, that when you face the Quban, they should find severity within you. If somebody wrongs you, forgive them. Correct. But this is not. And also, what, what type of wrongdoing? Okay, that's what type of wrongdoing? In our personal rights, we forgive him 15 times. In personal rights, with me believers, forgive 1 million times. The more you forgive, the less you, personal rights. Now, this is an obstruction for the success of a society. Allah says, this has got a punishment. This has to be done. Okay. This question started with, that do we love everyone or no? We don't love everybody. We love them for their potential and we'll keep guiding them. Even when Prophet Musa is sent to Firaun, he says, la alahu yitadakha wa yaxsha. Maybe he will be reminded, maybe he will fear of Allah. All of the human beings have the potential in them. And we respect this potential and keep trying. Does that mean we love everyone? I'll try. We distance ourselves and ask Allah to remove these people from His mercy. Because of the actions they did. How can I love somebody who sought and actually did martyr such a beautiful individual? Somebody, I was in Zambia last year. We went as a family to see Victoria Four. That was a reciting by six in Zambia. Although we may have a Jamar, I don't know. And there was a place where they were selling Coca-Cola drinks. We were really thirsty. I hope boycott is not an issue to talk about. And if it is, then maybe it's not an issue. Boycott is serious. Boycott is an obligation for going to Ammaraj. If you're not following the boycott, you're not listening to Ammaraj. Greatness. And I went to this, we're really thirsty. We climbed up from the falls and they were selling Coca-Cola. Whether you think Coca-Cola is on the list or not, it's up to you. But if it's proven to you it is, then you have to be careful. I hope there's not coke in front of us. That'd be really bad. You have to be, each of us has to do their own research on what is on the list. That's not my discussion, but the boycott is it. He was saying Coca-Cola. To my knowledge, Coca-Cola is supporting the IAA. And so he was saying Coca-Cola. I asked him, what surprise? He said Coke. I said, I don't buy Coke. He said, we have to love everybody. He told me this. So he says, we have to love Israel, we have to love Asia, we have to love everybody, because they're all sons of God, he was a Christian. They're all sons of God. I told him that imagine somebody right now, that even, let's say me, came up and in front of you, slaughtered your child in front of you. You go and thank them, I really love you, you're such a kind person. He says, ah, Abba. Not like that. That's too much. So I said, okay. Now the children of Palestine have been slaughtered in front of their parents on a daily basis. We want the honest to love their kids as well? We don't have love for these people because of what they're doing in their hands. Anyone else? Or we should conclude? Our end time was 5:30. Was it 5? 5:30, so we have another 9 minutes. Any other discussions? We won't get to our further topic, but we can have another discussion, maybe the next topic. This was exactly, my questions are exactly this.
The topic that we were supposed to discuss.
That was this. Culture and religion. We only share 9 minutes, we want to watch. Let's, let's leave with the questions on this topic. It became relevant.
You know, you mentioned this example where you went to a Sunni mosque and then you met them.
Yeah.
And we told you Shia, there was that stigma.
Yeah. I think we have to be present in society. Let's be present. Let's show them that we are a serious part of the Muslim community. In Hajj and Omrah, when people go, you know, they're, I didn't think Shia, like, so scared. I just went for Omrah in April. And very comfortably, I was showing the people, I was going around with my Aqib ring. I was praying on the floor very visibly for anybody. Praying with my hands alongside me, going to recite Ziyara, the cover of the Prophet. In fact, I had a discussion, I initiated a discussion, because I can speak basically Arabic, with one of the Wahabi Mufiz, you know, the guys in the red thing that are standing by the Zari? And they think their responsibility to stop people touching the Zari? Mashallah, this would be nice to find an eye on. That, you know, there should be a group of you that stand by the Zaris of the Muhminin and push people away and say, that I did that shay'ish. Where did, what was that based on? But we should be gay to these people. Show them that we're here, we're present. Shias are present proudly, non-apologetic. The problem is that often our presence, often our presence in society. Often our presence in society is not apologetic. We've been people that are apologetic in society. If we're apologetic ourselves, then they won't treat us like important people. We're proud. We're Muslims, we're Shias. We believe in Imam Ali himself, and we're not China. Good, very good. So Jafri Foundation is strongly in place, we don't compromise them. Let's put wisdom before unity. Now, when it comes to my interactions in society, it should be based on wisdom. With each group, I should have a suitable interaction, suitable words, suitable concepts, suitable tone, suitable style of delivery, that matches and in essence, takes us towards, the man da'ahil Allah. It's for the sake of Allah. With Sunnis, one of the key strategies that we have is unity. Based on the Quran, based on our Hadith. If we want to be wise in our interactions, if we want to be impulsive. If you want to be based on internet, ah, 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 right? Then, yeah, go out and rip them apart, you know? Some people have these tendencies, they want to show all the Sunni Hadith to them, that, look, your Sahih Mukhali says this, your Sahih Muslim says this, all of these things say this. And we, we want to through this, you know, we show them in their own books. We say, look, you, you, what's this going to do? Is this calling them towards Allah? Or is this pushing them away from, coming towards Allah? So wisdom has to be that gauge and that benchmark and that standard through which we decide what our actions should be. As the Quran says, unity is based on intellect and wisdom. It talked about people that were not united, united, and it says that it's because they don't have wisdom, they don't use their intellect. So wisdom is the key discerning tool to see how we should interact and base our actions in society. Unity is a product of wisdom. Yes? Anybody else? Yeah, that's it, understand. We can, we can start that discussion. I don't mind if you guys are ready to sit to sit. Okay. These are good, Ma'ud, these are good discussions. I hope you will study. It's a good discussion. Let's, let's finish this one off. If we have time, we can discuss it. I think people are already distracted entirely. And snacks have a super distracting capability. You want to hear the answer, but the snack comes and forget to hear your answer. You want to hear the answer, but the snack comes and forget to hear your own answer. I thought, I thought he said, "I don't want to take names and you say Mike." I tell Mike, so Mashallah, I know, so the guys will have to speak about it.
So there are certain people out there who, you know, are constantly with their own ideology, trying to divert people itself. And you know, many people get really impulsive about it and very emotional about it as well. How can we, people that in our own societies and families and...
Maybe this is news for you, but they don't want us to actually go and confront... It's about the Sunnis that... They don't want us to confront this. You know, all these people that join Speakers Corner and High Park and different places. You guys have a Speakers Corner over here? And they want to like destroy all the Sunnis, like, ah, you think that's going to work? Like, you think the Sunnis are going to be listening to Shia like ripping that Sunni apart? But no, that's the truth. That actually pushes people away. We have to be smart when we're... Wisdom is the key that tells us what to do. Wisdom and Islamic community, both of these together. So it doesn't, we're not even, we're not even encouraged to go and obliterate Sunnis. You know, like, go over to the places, like, they bring arguments, you show them their books, stick in their face and like kill them right there. It's not, it's not what we want.
Is this whole, again, the same thing that, you know, those same people who put a question mark on our beliefs, for example, with Belaia and stuff, and we get very emotional and impulsive?
Yeah, exactly, it's revenge. It's revenge. They attacked us, we attack them back. This is the silliest thing in the world, right? Let's say, there's a saying, right? That one person, one fool throws a brick in a well, 40 wise men have to get together to see how they can bring it out. He made a silly mistake, he's attacking us. Now we become defensive, that means that there's something wrong with us. Be proud of ourselves, be strong in our identity, we don't need to become defensive. And sometimes we'll respond. In the right way, in the right, with the right means. I said to keep the microphone on.
So then how do you handle this? Because we'll tell so much as we try to create this unity personally between...
See, it's like, for example, let's say you're an association of accountants or an association of engineers. Right? Whenever you have an association, you get some people that are going on the wrong path, clearly going on the wrong path. But if the majority, if we unite within the Shias against them, then they'll be seen as somebody who are fringe mentality and will be wiped out. Completely wrong, what they're saying is so wrong. In fact, they've become quiet recently. I don't see too much noise from them recently. Where? Oh, Al-Ahri? Islam is a different religion. Yeah, so we have to stand up. We have to stand up and meet together. We have to believe in unity first to be united. The Shias, we've not learned to believe in unity. The problem, the Quran, Hadith, everyone's saying unity, we don't believe in unity. Is that right? Yes? Yeah? Thank you, I appreciate the continued question. Thank you. I usually prefer dialogue that is not based on real thinking, not just to accept.
So based on the stories that you've heard of the Aima?
Yeah. Yeah.
Whenever they saw someone, I don't know, believing, they always say, "Would you like a drink? Someone's been tired." Where would you get the energy from if you didn't have love for that creation?
No, no, I said, the first point is love for our humanity.
So if you're going to listen, like...
Did the Prophet start the war better or not?
Yeah, but, oh, so when he felt angry, yeah?
No, no, but one aspect, Bajir is to go and fight and kill them, chop them up.
That was, I don't know, that was...
We're fools. Our religion is a complete religion because of this. If we think only mercy and kindness, then where does that ever come? Where a person has crossed the boundaries and we need to be strong with them.
Okay, so maybe the question is, how do you instill love for all of humanity? And then balance it out with discipline?
Brilliant. We instill love in all of humanity because of the potential Allah has placed in them. The Melati are told to do such and to other because of the potential the human being had. That's brilliant, that's in every single human being. But does that mean that I love Benjamin Netanyahu? I hate the guy. This is, if my kid asks me, what... My kid comes to me, right? My young, let's say 8-year-old son comes to his sister, "Papa, Benjamin Netanyahu..." Is that what we say? Of course not. But that's there inside me, I do know that if ever Benjamin Netanyahu, alaihi laana, decides to make the decision of changing himself to pass on Allah's judgment, I would not put that on a question. That's, the Quran says that. The Quran speaks about the forgiveness of their own, their own after-time past. Allah said, "Now it's too late." Meaning if he would have repented a few minutes before that, he would have been... And nobody to close the doors that Allah has left open. We love everybody because of the potential they had. But people that use this free will to go and martyr and slaughter children, should I be kind towards them? Of course not. It's exactly the sense of that. Don't let your mercy get the better of you in avoiding what Allah has instructed you to do. The Prophet waged war. The Prophet was, if somebody asks me, the Prophet was a person that was not scared to get strong and be at war and strike and kill, and the Prophet was not scared of that. In fact, I would have called a Prophet that was like that weak. Yes, it's all flowery and nice, but it's weak. When Allah tells you kill, you kill. So I hope that sort of, we do have, whenever we see a human being, the potential of a human being is there. But a person has used this free will so badly, that's a person I distance myself from. But yes, in guidance, laa, laa, we are the latka, or we are shah. We still try to guide that person. But does that mean I let my children expose them to him, let them be around him, let them see him? No, I distance myself. Anything that he's doing is wrong. I'm away from that. No, the people as well. The characteristics, did you say? No, the people. Characteristics is at a certain stage. For example, believers. We have a believer that lies. I say, "Look, because you're a believer, you're a person that loves Allah, you're a person who strives towards Allah, I love you." Because of this character, this character, leave, leave this character. Correct. But sometimes a person becomes like the son of Prophet Nuh. What does the Quran say about the son of Prophet Nuh? Inna hu... You want the reference, right? Surah Bud. So Bud, verse 46. Inna hu, no, more than that. Inna hu amalun ghil salat. He himself is an evil, he himself. Not inna lahu amalun salat, he has, no, he has become an evil, he himself. A person who decides continuously to go against the path of Allah, it reaches a point where Allah says, "I place a stamp upon his heart." What does this mean? The verse of Taha, so men taba Allahu ala qulbi. Alaa absa'im ghishaw. Through their own actions, they now separated from the path of humanity. And I separate from them. But it's a good topic, we can discuss it even in more detail, Mashallah. I think our time's up. Nuh, good, good, 46. I think we should conclude, we cannot wait any longer. Should we conclude? Yes, we should conclude. Yeah, this is strange. No, Badr was offensive. We attacked them, they were coming, they were walking back towards Badinah, they were going towards, sorry, Badkan. They were going towards Makkah, we went and attacked them, we struck them. They didn't have swords in their hands, the problem wasn't striking them. We're not against offensive words, it's a purpose. This statement, we say, only defensive, only offensive Islam doesn't accept that. Islam is only purposeful, only wisdom, only Allah's guidance. But why don't we strike Netanyahu? It's allowed, it's halal to do it. But is that the smartest thing to do? See, in their strategy, they think that's the smartest thing to do because they can't do much more. But really, killing the top commanders of Iran, has it affected the Iranian line of command? The war hasn't, 12 days, they were dumbfounded, they couldn't continue. It's the shortest war they've had to beg for a ceasefire in their history. And in the history, Israel, they've never had to beg for a ceasefire since anyone. So for strategy, we use strategy in war. Our strategy is not to wipe out, you wipe out Netanyahu, it's not going to do much. Yes, it may have like a bit of a, you know, you enjoy it, like, we want, you know, we're like those spectators. Yes, spectators enjoy it, like, they're losing 5 nil, but they're taking it, ah, ah, ah. I got you, you know, it's like, ah. But that's not, we want to win the game. So killing Netanyahu doesn't do much. We'll probably use so much of our intelligence, because the person who exposes where he is and over that, he's probably found out. Better we use that person to kill 500 people that are of high level, influential, we leave Netanyahu to live. We have to have strategy in one. The Quran speaks about strategy in one, different places, I say. Strategy, we're strategic. Anyway, let's stop, I think. This is going to get, it's going to drag on. We decided halfway when the questions were good from, a few participants had very good questions that we stick to this topic. It's nice that you drove the topic, say, "I didn't care." I had to present all my content, but you had good questions about this. So we end it.
On behalf of the Madrasah, I would like to take this opportunity to thank Sheikh Ali for conducting this program. I'm sure we all got something from it. Thank you very much, we understand you have been having a very busy schedule since you have come. And I'm sure this weekend has been very, very tough for you, but thank you very much. Thanks to our mic system that I, what do we call it, Aman. And thank you all for attending this program. Hassan, thank you very much. We now close the program.